Italian.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, July fourteenth meeting of the City of Shore Acres City Council. Ms. Anderson, will you call the role please?
Here, Jennings.
President.
I'm Ray Marsh. Alderman Greason.
Present.
Alderman Bell.
Present.
And Hill.
Alderman Mitchell.
Present.
Please.
Yeah, look where. You join me in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which is standing here, for nation and her God indivisible, with the highest of all. Honor the text, right? I pledge allegiance to her God.
All right. Well, welcome. Have a couple of special presentations this evening. Mr. Harrison, if you would see.
Where if you can, real quick, uh, Mr. Or Officer Santana was never introduced to council. We never had that opportunity. So sure you all know him by now, but this is Officer Jonathan Santana, brought his wife with him today and uh, two kids. Well, anyway, that's, that's Jonathan's family, y'all.
Yep.
I'm gonna read these uh, in opposite order, what you've got up here. I'd like to put Officer Jonathan's first. Officer Santana, I'm proud to award you this letter of commendation dated July first, twenty twenty five. I received an inter-office correspondence memo from Sergeant Tidwell explaining your actions as they related to the incident that occurred on February the sixth of twenty twenty five. On that day, you were patrolling during your assigned shift and observed a vehicle parked at Circle Park after the park was closed. Upon further observation, you were able to determine that an aggravated sexual assault of a fourteen-year-old child was taking place in the vehicle. Because of your actions, the criminal act was stopped immediately. Twenty-three-year-old male was taken into custody. Now know that your actions on a self-initiated call likely ended a crime spree by this male, as additional information discovered during the investigation led to further arrest of the suspect by additional agencies. Congratulations to you on this well-deserved commendation. I am proud to have you as a valued member of the Shore Acres Police and your hard work is being noticed by your peers. Please know that you are appreciated by me and the residents of this great city. Thank you.
Focusing.
A lot to focus on here. There's some buttons I need.
Single camera, y'all.
Any buttons in the same slot?
All right. So second one, Sergeant Tidwell. I am proud to award you this letter of commendation dated July first, twenty twenty five. I'm awarding this based on an incident that occurred on February the sixth of twenty twenty five. On that day, Officer Santana observed a vehicle parked at Circle Park after the park was closed. Upon further observation, he was able to determine that an aggravated sexual assault of a fourteen-year-old child was taking place inside the vehicle. Because of his actions, the criminal act was stopped immediately and a twenty-three-year-old male, twenty-three-year-old male was taken into custody. With your assistance, two charges of aggravated sexual assault were immediately filed against the subject. Moreover, you continue the investigation by obtaining search warrants for cell phones that ultimately led to their, to other conversations involving several additional minors. Utilizing this information, you coordinated with other area police departments and provided the information that led to additional charges levied on the suspect. Your labor-intensive investigation likely led to dozens of additional minors being saved from future actions of this suspect. Thank you for your hard work and your enthusiasm in the case. Congratulations to you on this well-deserved commendation. Proud to have you as a valued member of the Shore Acres Police Department. Please know that you are appreciated by me and the residents of this great city.
One thing faster, one point three. See?
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Good job.
Great job, sir.
Moving on. Item four point O, council report and requests. Items of clear to interest or specific request from council members for the city manager to address at a future meeting. Mr. Mitchell, anything?
Uh, like to thank Houston Yacht Club for the fantastic fireworks display. Um, seemed like there was a huge turnout this year, larger than I remember from the my tenure here in the city. Um, so it was a great night, very fireworks display.
Mr. Hill?
Um, I'm gonna be trying to attend the CCAT meetings um, as they come up in my play. It's a short for Seashore Community Advisory Pen. They go over a lot of different things regarding uh, safety issues and procedures of the plants that surround us. Um, if anybody in the community would like to have copies of those agendas of those meetings, uh, I think I'll be getting those on email. So just email me at the city address and I'll forward those to anybody that has an interest in seeing what's going on.
I'd like to uh, thank Mr. Harrison, Chief Harrison, and his team, their presence at the uh, firework display all along the waterfront on Friday. It's a large crowd. It's the largest crowd I've ever seen down there since I've lived here. And I understand there's not a single incident, a report turned in or anything. Thank you. And uh, I saw your officers up and down Miramar, back and forth. They were talking to the guests. They were uh, making sure they were safe, enjoying, enjoying the night. And uh, I mean, it looks good on the city and the citizens and the visitors here.
Thank you.
It was a good night overall.
Mr. Briesen?
There's an upcoming Harris County Flood uh, Input Meeting, and it's being held at Pasadena Convention Center uh, Tuesday, July twenty-second. It's from five to seven P M. I've been to several of those, but you know, you talk to them about flood control and what they're doing and most of the money this year, as you know, has been out in spring in some of these other places to the west of Houston. But uh, we've had very little luck of getting a whole lot done in Shore Acres. But I keep going and they keep saying they're gonna do something, but we're still waiting. That's all I have there.
All right. Ms. Roberts?
I would like to thank Troy and the police department for making a very known presence. It, it really did mean a lot, especially knowing that there wasn't a lot of fireworks being done in the city. It was kind of really quiet and mellow, which made it nice this year. So.
Thank you. All right. That's it. We'll move on to item five point one, public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to address the council. Time is limited to five minutes per speaker. Comments are to be directed to the council and dialogue with the audience is not permitted. Council members are prohibited by law from participating in the discussion or deliberation of items not on this agenda. Okay, we will start. Mr. Durene?
My name is David Geraney. Uh, my address is thirty-three sixteen Miramar Drive. And gonna dive down for just a minute, then come up and be nice at the end. I have a couple of things, one of which brought me to the meeting for sure today, which happened today. And it is a uh, it is in reference to an individual who has been creating a lot of consternation in the neighborhood. And my wife walked up to get the mail today and waved to a vehicle, which she often does, coming down Miramar, who happened to be a blue extended cab pickup, which is known to many of the people, including Officer Ryan, who I also talked about this individual too. Um, my assumption is, and I think it's right, is that he thought she was saying, slow down, and he ended up going into the long trench that he dug weeks earlier on Miramar and dropped the hammer, thereby throwing mud and everything. Basically, in this instant, he did the original one. He's done it before and he's done it again in front of my wife. And I think it was kind of a F you. I'll do what I want to do. Is my take on it? I could be wrong, but I think I'm right. I think we need to get aggressive with this child because he was mentioned to Officer Ryan by me because of a wa- a walker who has been coming into our community for years from the port who lives on the water. Not a he's not an unsophisticated individual. He stopped at my house because we talked so much from time to time and said that he had been threatened by this kid. Can you talk to your officers about this kid? And later on, I did. I ran into Officer Ryan running speed patrol on Shore Acres Boulevard by Glenn Cook's house. And we had a nice little discussion about this man. He was well aware of him. And he is getting out of hand. He is going to hurt somebody. Or in the case of something like what happened with me, if I'm around, he's gonna get hurt. And I don't want to go to jail because I hurt him. And that's where it stands. I am not alone. There is a lot of people that are aware of him. He needs to have the screws put down on him before he does damage, loses control, wrecks into a house, a child, a dog, whatever the case may be. Um, second, can we get a little bit better enforcement for trash around benches? I've been going to sit on Chuck's bench in the morning, taking sunrise pictures, and I stepped on fish guts, beer cans, plastic containers for the fish bait and all of that. And I would like to see if it's possible to do a proactive thing by our officers to literally stop and say, hey, please make sure you take your stuff with you when you leave because it's it's an, it's an incident that keeps getting worse and worse. We have trash. I mean, every time I go, there's a new set of fish guts at my feet on Chuck's bench, if it's not on Chuck's bench. I think just a little bit of like, hey, you are gonna take all that crap out with you would go a long distance. And it's not something that, you know, you're trying to profile some individual. You're just trying to say, hey, get your trash out. Cause once I get a couple of warnings like that, I think it's a done deal. That was, now we're on the upswing. Um, I wanted to take this time and moment to thank Troy. He's done a fantastic job as our city manager. I understand, I believe you were not our city manager at this point, or maybe they're trying to keep you as, you're not. Okay. I wanted to thank you for the time, the effort, the low wages of doing that job and all the headaches that went with it because now the grass is growing on the other side of the street and it wasn't doing that when you were in there. I've got some water, but I appreciate your service. I appreciate your service as a police officer or chief in this town. It's been a godsend, I think, uh, considering previous things that have happened with, with like individuals. And I think it's, it's been a wonderful thing. And I'm sorry to see you leave. We're, we're losing in an asset that I hate to see leave us. And regardless of where you end up with police chief, we're gonna miss you. We're gonna love you whether you're here or not. Okay?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Nathan.
Yes, sir.
Danny.
Tammy Kynetson, one zero zero six Shore Acres. I wanted to say to Bernie, um, I'm sorry for your loss of your father. You do a lot of work for the whole city. Take care of people when they're sick and when they're not. So I hope that you are taken well cared of at that point uh, in time. I hope that uh, everything is going better in the office now. I believe so. I've heard a lot of good things about them. Um, I want to go for a moment. Uh, I started going back down to the pier to do uh, meditation. I have a lot of things that go on my life and I love to sit and meditate at the water. The pier is getting worse with these children. And I don't know how to fix it except for to have more visual of their, maybe of even the pier committee. Uh, I went down there on a Saturday and there were fourteen kids under the age of twelve climbing on the outside of the fence to get on the pier. And they're gonna get hurt. And um, there's no way for them to get back up. Uh, I witnessed children climbing. Uh, the um, lamppost called Ed at midnight. He came down. They were climbing, could have been electrocuted, and they were jumping off onto the water. I do have pictures of those. And then in the weeks before that, Ed had a situation of a little girl throwing a rock at him that should have been um, got for trespassing because she was climbing on the outside when Ed asked her to. He got called a little bit of names. He has videos of that too. It is a, it is a concern. It is a big concern that these kids are still climbing on the outside or climbing the electric light poles and gonna get either electrocuted. And this was at midnight. And every one of them were under the age of fifteen, lived in Deer Park. All of these other kids that were there um, did not live here either. They were very respectful when I asked them to leave. And um, but it's, it's just getting more and more of the outsiders coming in and going on. And we're gonna have a situation before it's over with. Um, I still, I am praying uh, for the um, location of the new city manager. I do know that there have been a lot of things coming in for uh, Ed. Ed had uh, Judge Molly Manus that I do know was going to write because she worked, he worked for her and she passed away since. And it was a hard hit for him. I pray that he at least gets an opportunity. And that's just me because of the passion of this city. And I do know that he's had many a people that have written in, and I pray Mayor that you at least give him that opportunity. Things change. He's better being inside the city than being on the outside. And he knows the ins and the outs. His passion, his drive and his knowing of how to coordinate ordinances, coordinate meetings. He still is trying to help Shore Acres Pier. God put them in the guidelines, which is what he had to do in the beginning too. So I pray that that uh, comes down. Otherwise, I don't have any other saying but that. But the pier, um, I just wanna see it right. I do want those kids. I too had a cousin from Deer Park call me at work and said, I just got in trouble. Do you have a pass to get on that pier? And I said, you have no business on that pier without someone. Well, my friend, no, it doesn't work that way. I asked him, how'd you get in? He said, I went around the water and I climbed the fence. And I said, you're lucky that I don't have you arrested for doing that same thing. Don't ever let me catch you there again. My own family. I don't care. Am I gonna give you my pass? Not give you a pass. Maybe what needs to be changed on the trespassing, there will be a fine trespass. Maybe that's a little bit strong. Because that's what they couldn't do to that little girl that cursed him, threw a rock at him. He could have filed a SART charges, but he didn't. But I know you can't control it a hundred percent and the cops can't be a babysitter either. But we gotta figure a way, even the people in the community to know who's right to be here and who doesn't have the right before someone gets hurt.
Thank you. Anthony?
Ladies and gentlemen, I am Anthony Martin. I live at one twenty-seven Shore Acres Boulevard. The only thing I want to touch on is, I guess, since the summer kind of started, I've seen a pickup in excessive amount of traffic and speeding going around in that curve. Um, it's just a bunch of young kids. That truck had been an issue. Um, and just flying in that curve. Um, one of them, I see, almost took out a deer. Uh, you know, nobody slowing down. And then you got those that are just actually going the opposite direction on that side street instead of going the one way. So the traffic is really getting out of hand in the afternoon, more so on Thursdays through Saturday night. And then there's a bunch of people just hanging out way late at the pier. So it's just picking up and I think it's getting out of hand with all the mess that's going on with these kids. So yeah.
Thank you. Kelly? Ms. Jay? Okay. Mary Beth? Mary?
You know I can't pass up. My name's Mary Becker. I live at two oh two Fairfield. Uh, I have a couple of things. One, I want to say thank you for honoring those police officers. That is really good. I, I would like for the city, the citizens here to know the police officers more. Um, and also I would have, it would have been nice if there had been a mention on the city signs. You know, I have this issue about city signs that they're underutilized. Uh, it would have been nice to have had that on there that we were gonna honor those, those police officers tonight. There would have been probably a whole lot more people here who know those police officers and would like to honor them. Um, the other thing is, um, if I want to know if there is still a uh, city curfew, a curfew for uh, people under eighteen, fifteen, whatever was, or used to be a curfew. I don't know if it's still in existence. If there is, I would like to have it posted. There is um, uh, there's no mention of anything like that. Um, we have both. And I also would like to say about the underutilization of the signs. There's been the Shore Acres Appreciation Day. That was on the outside, the outside sign, but not any mention here. Um, there, we've had the fireworks, um, and then this appreciation. All of those things could have been posted. And there are two signs, two sides to this sign out here. And I would like to see both sides being used instead of some quote, that's nice, but I think that that space should be used for more important, more important things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the sense.
Okay. Thanks, Beth.
Yes, hold on. I'm trying to get this done. I don't know.
Amen address, Ed.
I, I know. I'm looking for this uh, screen here. It just went away right when I unmuted it. All right. I would do this without looking. Uh, Adybar, one forty-five Shady Lawn. Uh, thank you guys for uh, letting me come in on this meeting. And I want to thank the mayor right off the bat for putting this filter on this camera that makes those men look a whole lot better looking. So uh, it helps on my end. It's a lot better when up, when you're, than when we're up close. But uh, also I wanted to follow with uh, what Troy had to do today, committing Officer Santana. Uh, we are blessed to have a man like that uh, patrolling our streets. And he also uh, came to my house to help my wife out in a very uh, much of a panic and great pain. And his presence and his professionalism was just remarkable. And I just thank God for those types of folks that we have on staff. And Troy, thank you again for, for having, you know, uh, uh, vetted these guys out and they're, they're great gentlemen. Um, as Tammy said, one of my good friends, uh, Molly passed away and we were talking about this uh, letter of recommendation and stuff like that. And she's, she's a busy lady, but uh, um, I'm just, uh, my heart's broken. She's my uh, son's grandma, uh, godmother. And uh, you know, it's, it was just kind of tough to hear that. And she, that lady lights up the room anywhere she walks. And I was just blessed to be a part of her uh, life back in the day. Um, I'm also wanted to make sure, the reason I'm not there today is because I'm stuck out here at the Freo River. Can't get away. We're all safe and sound. Uh, but um, I would have been there uh, if we could have gotten out, but it's the, the river rose to about fifteen feet o- over the normal height. So it was difficult. And so the reason I'm here is to make sure I stay residing in your prefrontal uh, cortex for the the time it takes to get a new manager in place. I want to make sure my name stays in there. So that's why I showed up today on uh, the camera here. And uh, and I appreciate that, that you guys have uh, um, going through this process as thoroughly as you are. Um, I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity if it comes. I can't wait to get an interview with you guys. Uh, I want to make a difference here in the city. And uh, I'm just thankful that I live in such a great city with uh, uh, folks like uh, Troy and the, I'm sorry, the police officers and other folks that, that are in the meeting room there with you. And Mr. Geraney, I agree with that, uh, what you're saying about that gentleman. Well, I shouldn't even say gentleman, that person who's driving around in that blue truck. He's a young blond-haired uh, kid who's, who's a little bit of a menace. He's drives around late at night with his music blaring beyond belief that he wakes me up at nighttime. And I go outside and I'll see the tail end of his truck passing by for whatever reason, late at night. But um, anyhow, um, the other thing I was going to mention was the um, oh my God, I just went blank, guys. I'm over here. Well, I do, oh, I know what it was. Uh, yes, while we're here in the Freo River, it's uh, it's been pretty, pretty safe, no, no loss of life. The only thing I would uh, ask everybody, and I'm sure you've done this, is just continue to send prayers to those folks out in the Kerrville area. It's been so devastating. Uh, I have a few good friends from San Antonio that are out there unfortunately removing young people and bodies from those brushes, piles, huge piles of brushes. And it's just sad. And um, when I was down here in the Freo River, uh, I cried quite a bit uh, as I held my grandkids. And I can't imagine what those folks were going through in Kerrville. But that's it. I just wanted to say, please be praying for those folks and, and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Be safe.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Yeah, let me shut this thing down. Moving on, item six point O, city manager's report. Well, my name's on that tonight because as you might have heard earlier, Troy is no longer officially the city manager. He has moved into his role as police chief. And he is enjoying it and looks a lot more relaxed. I, on the other hand, am not. Nothing like working for free. Um, I always read these numbers. I'll let you read them. We're in a pretty good, pretty good space right now with uh, cash. We uh, had a few months ago in the fiscal year. And so obviously the uh, uh, the unencumbered will come down as, as we know, that's, that's traditional. But right now we're in a really good place. And counsel, if you will look in the uh, the packet and, and you guys too, it's in the packet on, on the website. I included a different type of report for you. This is a year-to-date comparison so that we can start the budget processes. We'll kick that off. If you look last year to this year, a year-to-date comparison. Uh, we normally don't put that in the uh, packet. And uh, I thought it would be a, a good way for you to get started. And you can see some accounts are, are a bit over, some accounts are a bit under on revenue. If you see red, that's a bad thing. On expenses, if you see red, that's a good thing. Okay. So that's the way the, the report reads. And we'll go over it in a, a budget workshop in, in, in much more detail. And you guys got a uh, you got a juggernaut on your hands this year with uh, the potential of a, a new city manager, a, a, a police chief, uh, E O M S that quadrupled. Uh, fire protection wound up fifteen percent. Uh, Jill went up. Like I said, you guys are, are gonna have fun this year. Uh, Troy is just grinning because you don't, he doesn't have to do it. He thinks he doesn't have to do it, but he's gotta do the PD budget. We're gonna cut it in half and see what he can do. And he thinks he can get away with it, and he can't. All right. Police report, Mr. Harrison.
And we'll just lay two officers off and not have night patrol there. It's your, it's your request.
By God, I'll patrol the city on my knees. Tony told me one time, if I, I was, I didn't want to buy him a new police car. He said, Mary Jane, I will come out here personally and walk these streets.
In front of about fifty people, including his wife.
Including my wife, who doesn't forget that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for having me tonight as chief of police. It's exciting to stand up here and only give the police report, not be accountable for much else. Yes, there's some growing to do and some things going on in the neighborhood. I don't, I don't know these things unless people tell me. I didn't know that there was a blue truck, but I wasn't aware there were so many incidents. We will talk about that very, very soon. You see the, you see the calls there. There's a uh, normal number of citations for this time of year. We, we do have things that go up this time of year. Kids do get out of school. You know, during the school year, you can't make them go to school. And, uh, when it's summer, you can't keep them out of, outside and doing things. But, uh, we've, we're trying to keep a, a watch on that. Uh, our yacht club patrols and our, our college patrols are, are about the same. Had a, a great meeting last week with, uh, with Jim Schul and, uh, and, and Mr. Hill, both, uh, concerning some things going on with the pier. And we're gonna try to help out a little bit more. We can't enforce house rules. But we can have a better presence and make sure that we're stopping and, uh, let people know that we're driving through there. So we're gonna see how that helps. And we're gonna, I've already helped Mr. Schul make some signs. Numbers there. I'll remind you, because I haven't done it in a while in Harris County, to file charges on somebody. It's pretty tough. It's not just a police officer that says this person needs to receive a trespass. And you can't write a citation for trespass. If you could write a try, a citation for trespass, we would do it way more often. We have to go through the district attorney's office and it is a pain in the neck to file any charge in Harris County. So we can do it, but we get questions. We have to check off a box, about thirty of them. But everything's about normal for this time of year. I don't see anything out of the ordinary. Um, always like to hear from you guys if you feel like something's going on that, that we need to know about. I don't get my information from Facebook. Uh, I don't even look at it. I have people that send me screenshots, but I don't look at that No Drama page at all. So if that's where y'all are sharing your information, that's not a good thing. I'll take questions.
Mr. Harrison, uh, you know, right offhand, do we have a curfew for, uh, under eighteen?
We, we still have a curfew.
Oh, we did?
No. We have not, that I'm aware of. Uh, we've not re, we've not seen, or at least I'm not seeing it on the daily reports that we're contacting a lot of kids at night. Doesn't mean they're not out there, but, uh, I know that I shift guys when they come on. They sit out on the freeway a lot till it gets dark, then they do, they're driving around and, uh, I would put out that we need to do, you know, we need to keep watching.
Talking about the, the signs, maybe, uh, the posting about the curfew would be another good sign to put up there, maybe?
I, I was talking about the curfew signs at the yacht club. Are you talking about the signs out here?
I'm talking about the pier.
I mean, you shouldn't have kids out there that young anyway.
Right.
Without some type of supervision. And that goes into house rules. There's no law against that, but I certainly have a hard time thinking that kids are out there without parents that young. But they also, uh, Mr. Hill, if I remember right, y'all were going to take some, uh, uh, and make some, some barriers that was gonna prevent a lot of this, so.
That's, that's a problem.
Good.
Yeah, it's important to remember that the pier is a private association. So, a- as we've been reminded many times, so, um, so who belongs to this blue truck? Let's just put it out there.
What?
What?
Thought everybody knew that, that.
I have no clue about a blue truck. He doesn't come to my, my house.
He didn't have a run-in one day. Little kid with sharp blond hair, drive that blue truck. Smartass.
I, I had a guy that flagged me down a couple of weeks ago.
Just figured around.
And told me that there was a blue truck. And then also Ryan talked to me about it. And I told him, I said, well, if you find him, you need to ride him. And I think we have written him once, but I was not aware that it was this widespread. I was first I've heard. Because like I say, I don't get my information from Facebook. If it, if that's where it's being told, it's not doing any good.
I don't either. So who belongs to the blue truck?
Uh, if I'm not, it's a juvenile, so I can't, I'm not gonna say a name, but I believe that it's a, a gentleman that lives on Baywood.
Baywood.
And I think we do know who he is. So we will have another conversation with his parents, which we've already done once.
Alright, very good. Ms. Ramos, anything?
I'm good.
Mr. Bilt? Alright, moving on. Item six point three, Public Works. That's me again. Nothing much changed. We have some projects going on. You can read these charts. There's, uh, pumping water, we're flushing toilets, we're taking showers. I'm happy. That's all that matters to me. But, uh, hey Maggie, don't laugh. A few years ago, you couldn't take a shower and flush the toilet at the same time.
Then y'all had a water line broken, uh, west side of Shore.
Yeah. That's, that's bad when your toilet's in the shower too, let me tell you.
Get outside toilets.
Um, got some projects going on in Public Works. We're replacing the, uh, the control systems at the water plants and all three lift stations. And that project will probably not be complete until mid-August. Uh, we're relining the interior of Lift Station Two and trying to get rid of some of the odors. And that project will also be probably mid to end August. Uh, we've, we have placed, uh, glotters, bladder covers, sounds bad, bladder covers on, uh, twenty-five manholes to try to reduce the inflows into the system. What happens is when it, when it rains hard, obviously, and we have inflows into the system, then we have outflows, uh, by, by gravity feet. And so we're, uh, we, we addressed that with about a quarter of the, the manholes in the city. And we, we are waiting to, to see the progress of that to make sure it works before we invest more into that. So Public Works is coming along. We're doing a lot of work. Uh, I don't know if you noticed, but we cleaned up the area of Public Works an awful lot. We got rid of the old pole barn. We've, we've, uh, emptied, uh, eighty cubic yards of trash thus far and still going. We are, we've emptied the inside of the building that the office is out. We're going to use that for file storage to replace, uh, uh, two remote storage areas on, on, on a monthly basis. Uh, we've, uh, the contractor should be out to paint the exterior of the building next week. And the police department station is also going to be repainted. We have to maintain these buildings so that we don't, uh, uh, loo- lose our, our investments over there. Uh, we did have some da- termite damage at, uh, Public Works that we had to repair and, and get treated. But all in all, Public Works is, is, is coming right along on schedule. Uh, we're just, uh, trying to get things ready, uh, for the end of the summer. And, uh, we're just crossing our fingers that we don't get hit by a major storm. Any questions on Public Works, guys? Oh, alright. Uh, EMS, me again. Hello? Um, for some reason, they did not put response times on this. They put time of day. So I don't know what the response times were for June. I've asked and we will, we will get those for next meeting. Uh, they did put their average response time of nine minutes on there, but that doesn't really help, man. But you can see the, uh, calls were, uh, all over the city, not, not in one, one area. And, uh, I, I took all of the, uh, actual physical addresses off. They had those on there. We, we might want to take those off. So there's some things going on. That's our, uh, that's Laporte. Uh, for those of you don't know, we switched from, uh, Windsor to Laporte first year. And that's a, uh, a very large impact on our budget, but we, we certainly, uh, think it's a better way to go. So any questions on the EMS? Alright, moving on. Seven point one minutes. Do I have a motion to consider the minutes from June the ninth?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion for Ms. Ramos. Have a second?
A second.
You've had a chance to review them. Any changes you wish to make? additions, retractions? Are, are all those in favor of accepting the minutes as is? Say aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item seven point two, Resolution twenty-two-five oh-seven oh-one relating to the official newspaper. Do I have a motion to consider?
Motion to consider.
I have a motion for Mr. Greason. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second for Ms. Ramos. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
This Ms. Anderson.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm defaulting.
That Ms. Anderson, that Ms. Anderson can go over there. Okay, we need to replace the Bay Area Observer. And Bernie has been handling this with, with Maggie. So I'm going to let these two ladies have, have the floor and we'll be out here about midnight.
That's about right.
Go ahead, Bernie.
I met with Miss Maggie. She came and explained everything to me about how we're to be using this newspaper. And I am going to default to her to let her explain it in her terms better than I can explain it.
And why, and why?
Why. And why? Is that what she said? Yes.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah.
Well, I know you would, but I had to remind you.
First of all, Maggie, and those of you, you don't know me, and those of you that do know me, know me from around important newspapers in my world. Uh, last year I was approached after the Bay Area Observer went out, uh, because of Rebecca's health. They shut down. So I was approached and asked if I would be, uh, the city paper. To be the city paper, number one, you have to be in fifty-two weeks publication consistently the year prior. Well, I'm a monthly newspaper, as all of you know. And the first comment out of my mouth to Mayor Hilton was, I'm not doing a weekly newspaper. They came to me, Corby Alexander came to me and, uh, the mayor both and said, we really need you. We're paying the Baytown, uh, Baytown Sun way too much money. We need to have, uh, see if you can save us some money. So I made up with a guy I know who has the Winnie paper and the Huntsville paper. He has over fifty years' experience. His name is Wade Thibodeau. And he has the Hometown Press in Liberty, in, in Winnie, I'm sorry. So he and I got together. He certainly qualifies. He has done legal notices in this paper. So we tried to figure out how we could do this without looking, I'm sorry, sir.
It's alright, I'm, I'm intently listening without my hearing aid.
Me too. Sorry, huh? Uh, so what happens is, what we have come up with, and the first edition came out last week. So what we are doing is, this is what's happening now and this is what's gonna happen in the future. First of all, I kind of say, I am a special section, a salesperson, a sales marketing person for Hometown Press. I'm not an editor. I don't have to pay the bills. I don't have to do any of that stuff. That's Wade, that's Wade Thibodeau's paper. I am the one who is marketing, uh, the legal notices to go into the paper. You can't hear me?
If you're you find it, we'll get the paper for you, so they can see.
Okay, good. So good. So I didn't read anything, because we're coming out tomorrow. We're coming out tomorrow, so I took them all out of my truck. So anyway, what will happen is, his paper will come out and the front page, which you're fixing to see, says Hometown Press. Inside of it currently on page seven is called Around the Bay News. Okay, and I do this because it's kind of associated with me, but it is a special section of his paper of the Hometown Press. That's the way it has to be legally. So what will happen right now, I'm three pages. And what we're doing is, we don't have any legal notices yet. We're just trying to let people, uh, see what it looks like, kind of get used to it. And the response is, yeah, no good. You're not gonna give me one to talk to?
Yeah, great for our visuals.
Uh, this is what it looks like, okay? This is his paper on page seven. And you're gonna see the hometowns. And, uh, Around the Bay News. Okay? And, and here, the editorial will consist of people. Uh, she can have it down. Will consist of information and stories and articles in our area. We want to make that section. People want to read it. Right now, it is the first edition, so it has a lot of Seabrook. It does have some Laporte. Uh, just to interject, I went to the Houston Yacht Club Appreciation Day and I kept a picture. I have to be careful that I don't infringe on this paper with the Round of Fort News. I mean, with the Round of Fort. I have to be careful because my paper has to stay in existence. So I, I can't double up on a lot of these stories. So I'm kind of particular with the Round of Fort. But anyway, I did cover the, the Houston Yacht Club thing. I took a picture which just showed the table set up. There was no people in it. And I did write a little article and I sent this to Wade, be in this next edition, which goes to press in the morning, so that y'all would have some coverage. And as long as I can, I will get, make sure that y'all have coverage in this section, especially since hopefully you're going to be doing legal notices in this Around the Bay News. Is everybody up with me? Okay. Right now, I'm just three pages. Eventually, when we start getting some revenue by legal notices and public notices, so y'all send them on in. Once we get those, then the goal is to have an eight-page Hometown Press and an eight-page Around the Bay News. So what will happen now, when, when that happens, we will, excuse me, that news, again, that's a vision, a visual from. So what will happen then, you will have two sections. This will be Section A and Section B will be Around Bay News with the help, with all the legal and stuff about our communities around us. When I pick them up Tuesday afternoons, then I, in, in Baytown, I'll take them to Baytown, then I will flip-flop them. Where you will see Around the Bay News and this will be inside. There'll be two sections. That is in, that's going to happen. It's not gonna happen now because I haven't got any money yet. I haven't even paid Kelly for delivery, so.
Well, I don't know.
This is a major thing here. And you're not the only town. I come up and I've gone to Morgan's Point. Morgan's Point just voted in to go back to the Baytown Sun. So it'll be a year if, unless they decide they want to rate, save some money. By the way, you were paying, how much you paying in Baytown, you know?
We haven't done anything.
You haven't done anything since the now thing? You haven't done any legal notices since Rebecca went down? That's over seven months ago.
Well, it, May was the last one.
Yeah, yeah, it's a year. No, that was a couple of months, okay. Anyway, regardless, you're gonna be paying us six dollars a column inch. Uh, Baytown is something like twelve fifty or fifteen dollars a column inch. So I will be saving, that will be on your plus in the, what did you say, in the green? Not in the red when you do your pa- paper thing. Uh, so that's what it is. Okay, it's a weekly paper. We will bring some of them here, so we need, not gonna bring a lot. Eventually, the bad news is, these have to be purchased. That is the, uh, postal regulations. With legal notices, a paper has to be posted. That's why you pay for the Houston Chronicle. That's why I used to pay for the Report Bay Shore Sun. That's why you pay for these papers that do legal notices. That is the law. So at this point, you're getting them free, enjoy. But I'm gonna see if I can't get free, y'all, not enough to cover the whole place. But to get enough for, well, you don't have to share next time. I have any questions?
Alright, thank you, Maggie.
See, I'm good, I do. It lasted an hour.
Alright, Council, you got any questions? Please don't ask her to dance. That's my part.
So I guess subscriptions would be available?
Yes, I would like to have subscription. Yes, uh, what I'll do is we'll put a subscription form in there. Enjoy them on it. Give us time to kind of catch up. And throughout what we are doing, we're gonna have mistakes. Like that logo, the round, all messed up, so I have redone it. But, uh, yes, subscriptions and ads. Because you're gonna be covering, I forgot to mention this. I'm so, I'm sorry, I forgot something.
It's okay.
Because he's in Winnie, he's in five counties. His distribution's not gonna be just in Laporte. He's succulates in five counties. Plus, I'm going to try, go after Kima. I forgot to tell y'all. I was going, I'm going after y'all. The city of Laporte, going after Morgan's Point. I'm going after, uh, just getting my list from Laporte ISD. I will approach Santa Senna College. I will go to Deer Park, probably Mount Bellevue. And Taylor Lake, and whoever the other one is. There's two of them over there. So this is going to be Around the Bay News. If that is your question?
Yes.
Did I finally get around to it?
Mr. Mitch?
Well, she had, that was my question was the subscription.
Anything else, John? Wes?
So those will be delivered by mail? They won't be?
Yes, no, I'm not gonna be delivering them. I'm not.
They're sold.
Oh, you got a simple.
I don't throw a rattle.
Have y'all set the price yet for the subscription services?
Have y'all set the price yet for the subscription services over?
No, this is the first time I thought of it, but I'm going to put it on my list. That will have to, that will have to be him. Remember, I'm not the publisher. I'm not the editor. But I will bring this up to him. We were certainly going to, uh, get it. He won't be in this next paper. Like I said, he's putting that paper together right now. That's why he's not here. You get me. So next week's, next week, uh, we should have something in there about it. So they'll be upstairs.
All right. Alicia?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Well, all those in favor of amending section one, article one, section two point two of the City of Shoreager City Code. Say aye?
Aye.
And the measure passes unanimously. Item seven point three, a second regular meeting in July. I think we should do this for a lot of reasons, the budget being one. And, uh, that way I don't have to call a special meeting and if there's not, uh, four people here, we can still meet. So, you can call it for the 28th, 21st, whatever y'all want, but we do need a second meeting. 21st is next week though. So two weeks would be better for me. Give me more time to prepare for you. Anything?
28th is good, good for me.
For me as well.
I'm good.
Good. 28th.
All in favor of 28?
Aye.
All right. We will have a second regular meeting on July 28th. All right. We're now going to go into executive session to discuss the vacant city manager position. Where we stand right now, we were received, uh, 23 resume, resumes and, and candidates, potential candidates. Uh, I assigned everybody a number. Uh, council was not aware of names except for one local guy who, uh, campaigned for the job. And so that way there was no gender or, or racial bias, anything like that. They just had a number and a resume. They couldn't tell anything else. Uh, two advocates have been interviewed. Um, we're continuing to review them. And council is going to suggest further, uh, candidates that they may want to interview tonight. And no deadline has been set. So we are going to go into executive session as of 6:52 PM. Thank you guys for coming out. We, we're going to come back, but all we're going to do is adjourn the meetings.
One, I want to tell you about a realistic article that I sent right.
Try and stop it. It's already here for a long time.